Excuse me. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for May 14, 2024. City Clerk, could you call the rule, please?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen-House?
Yep.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmember Zahn?
Here.
Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations tonight. The first one is Bike Everywhere Month, read by Deputy Mayor Mo Malakutian.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas across Washington State, thousands of people travel by bicycle for transportation and recreation, providing health, environmental, and economic benefits. And the transportation sector is responsible for more greenhouse gas emission than any other sector of our economy, meaning how we travel can and must be one of the biggest parts of the solution to the climate crisis. And building bicycle-friendly communities is known to improve people's health, quality of life, and community spirit while improving safety and reducing pollution. And the City of Bellevue's Choose Your Way Bellevue Program, as well as Cascade Bicycle Club, Washington Bikes, and other organizations support Bike Everywhere Month during May. And the City of Bellevue and many other regional partners, including East Rail Partners and King County Parks, are working to improve the safety and accessibility of bicycling in our community. And bicycling is an affordable, accessible mode of transportation for people of different abilities, races, and income levels, helping to reduce social inequities. And Friday, May 17, 2024, is Bike Everywhere Day, which promotes bicycling as an important travel option. Now therefore, I, Mo Malakutian, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Bike Everywhere Month in Bellevue and urge all residents to consider bicycle commuting and recreational bicycling to enjoy the unique benefits it brings throughout the year.
Thank you. And I hear we have somebody from East Rail Partners to accept. Is that true? Would they like to come up? All right. I'm not seeing them. So let's go on to the next proclamation, National Police Week proclamation, read by Councilmember Nguyen-House.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States, including 249 dedicated Bellevue Police Department members. And whereas, according to the Federal Bureau of Investigation, there were 43,649 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2021, resulting in approximately 15,300 injuries. And whereas, since this first recorded death in 1791, over 23,700 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty. And whereas, this includes Officer Jordan Jackson and Detective Thomas Ray, two members of the Bellevue Police Department whose lives were tragically lost in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of Jackson, Ray, and other dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, there are 282 new names of fallen heroes being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 118 officers killed in 2023. And whereas, the service and the sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 36-annual candlelight vigil on May 13, 2024, which was yesterday. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas, law enforcement officers are a vital part of our community, standing ready to respond to emergencies and risk their own safety and health and the execution of their duties. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through the 18th, 2024, as National Police Week. In Bellevue, and encourage all residents and businesses to recognize and express their appreciation for our law enforcement officers for their honorable profession and public service to us all.
Thank you, Councilmember. And so I hear we have Major Alicia McKinney here to accept. Hi, come on up. If you have something to say, please feel free.
Just thank you all for recognizing Police Week and recognizing Officer Ray or Detective Ray and Officer Jackson.
Absolutely. How about we'll do one more proclamation and then we'll do a picture with you.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. So just have a seat and stick around. Okay, the last proclamation is Affordable Housing Week, read by Councilmember Stokes.
Whereas, all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as "housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities." And whereas, Bellevue is committed to increasing safe, affordable housing and has a significant lack of housing to meet needs of those in extremely low-income and low-income brackets. And whereas, studies show that for every $100 increase in median rent, homelessness increases by 15% in metro areas and 39% in suburbs and rural areas. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recognize safe, healthy, and affordable housing within communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health. And whereas, the City of Bellevue is a member of the Regional Coalition for Housing, ARCH, a partnership of King County and East King County cities, dedicated to preserving and increasing housing for low- and moderate-income households in the region. And whereas, everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, the businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are uniting to raise awareness and to participate in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 13, 17, 2024, as Affordable Housing Week in Bellevue, and commit to actions and efforts to ensure Bellevue residents can live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. And I believe we have Patrick Tippi, the ARCH Housing Stability Program Manager, and Sabrina Velarde, City of Bellevue Housing Stability Program Coordinator. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you so much for having us. We prepared brief comments because we get it. So I'm here on behalf of the Planning Division's Affordable Housing Team and our Housing Stability Program, along with Patchy Tippi from ARCH. And we're here representing a much larger group of partners dedicated to the cause of affordable housing.
Good morning. I'm Patrick Tippi with ARCH. On behalf of the 11 staff members with ARCH, I'm here grateful to be here and a part of the partnership with Bellevue to implement the Housing Stability Program, a significant investment of local resources in affordable housing and services in Bellevue prioritizing very low-income households. ARCH's partnership with Bellevue goes back over three decades, when Bellevue helped to lead other Eastside cities to form ARCH and to work collectively to address affordable housing needs in the region. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but ARCH appreciates our long history of partnership and the city's ongoing commitment to creating and preserving affordable housing. We look forward to the efforts to expanding housing options and making Bellevue an inclusive and affordable city.
And so, thank you for your ongoing commitment, as Patrick mentioned, to increasing the supply of housing in the City of Bellevue, especially for our most vulnerable communities. Addressing housing needs across the continuum requires a team effort. To that end, our team prioritizes collaboration across multiple departments, including our trusted advisors at ARCH, to ultimately meet our housing needs. We look forward to continuing this work together with you all and with our partners to see our investments of resources come to fruition.
Great. Thank you so much. Why don't you come up to the front? We'll all do a picture together. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do you have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are six pre-registered speakers on tonight's list. So before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time of oral communications is not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people speaking on items not on tonight's agenda will be called. The presiding officer is authorized in both of those categories to give preference to people who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on items that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Cameron Cast.
And I'm going to ask that all our speakers remember to be polite, and we will listen politely to you in return. Thank you so much.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. My name is Cameron Cast, and I'm a resident and daily bike commuter in Bellevue, and I'm speaking up here in support of Vision Zero. A goal to eliminate all traffic-related fatalities and serious injuries in our city by 2030 is not only a commendable goal, but an achievable one with human-centered design of our streets. Every day, I experience Bellevue streets firsthand as I go to work, run my errands, or enjoy the vibrancy of our city. Despite constant attention and vigilance to my personal safety, a lack of adequate infrastructure has put me in harm's way, or has put me in harm's way a few times, or has prevented me from visiting an area of our city altogether. Safe infrastructure for all transportation modes is vital to Vision Zero. The recent staff report that will be presented today shows a distressing reality. 27 lives were drastically altered or ended on our city's streets due to traffic-related collisions in 2023. This is unacceptable. Despite previous measures, there's a persistent flat trend in serious injuries or fatalities on our road network over the past decade. This signals that our current approach is insufficient as we step into 2024, and we can leverage extensive research and implement changes that will make a real difference in protecting the citizens of our city, including me, including others, and including you. Achieving zero traffic-related injuries on or deaths on our city's streets is vital to a healthy, safe, and sustainable city for all residents. If we are truly committed to Vision Zero, it is crucial that we demonstrate organized urgency, financial investment, and political willpower to transform Bellevue into a city where zero is the only acceptable number of street fatalities. Let us work together to make Bellevue into a city where beauty is both paired with safety and accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Patrick Sethianathan, who has indicated he would be attending virtually, though I don't see him online. Mr. Sethianathan, are you joining us this evening?
Okay. Moving on to the next speaker, Sandy Shetler.
Hi. Good afternoon, good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor and Deputy Mayor. I'm Sandy Shetler. I'm a co-founder of Tree Action Seattle, and I'm a medical social worker. I'm, excuse me, reams of peer-reviewed studies show that urban trees are strongly linked with positive public health outcomes. Because of this, I'm asking you to support Bellevue's new tree code. Bellevue can learn from Seattle's mistakes. Last May, Seattle passed a new tree ordinance that allows all trees to be removed in return for in-lu fees when properties are developed. High hardscape coverage is guaranteed, leaving no space for new or existing trees, even though Seattle's already fifth in the nation for urban heat islands. This has led to a dramatic uptick in the removal of healthy, mature trees. Though HB 1110 allows exemption for local tree ordinances, Seattle's urban forest will not have this protection when this upzoning occurs. In contrast, the code that you will soon vote on ensures that every home will have access to the large shade trees through a tree credit formula. It also contains thoughtful provisions, like a look-back period, which deters preemptive removal of trees because mitigation follows the property for three years. These common sense policies are backed by experts, and they're what we are advocating for in Seattle. Bellevue lost 65 acres of trees from 2019 to 2021. That's a warning light, and it's getting close on an annual basis to what Seattle lost in their most recent canopy study. While I'm sure that many of you like to come to Seattle to visit, there's a good chance that one of the reasons you love Bellevue is because of the trees. Please protect Bellevue's amazing urban forest by voting yes on the new tree code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Excuse me. Our next speaker is Kirsty English.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Councilmembers. Mayor Robinson. I am the founder of Trees for Liveability. I started the organization in December 2021. I'm here not to speak on behalf of myself because my views are probably clear, but to speak on behalf of our 1,768 petition signers, our 55 volunteers, our six board members, and our 12 community partner organizations, including People for Climate Action, 350 Eastside, 300 Trees, Eastside Autobahn, Save Coal Creek, and Bellevue Green and Clean. We have some amazing opportunities ahead of us. We've been working for two years on many, many Saturdays, community events, presentations. We've done research across this region to find what would make Bellevue's trees able to sustain this period of extreme growth in our community. Our tree code study recommended changes, including minimum tree density, looking at the right tree in the right place, and balancing the needs for low-cost housing and home development with the need to preserve canopy for all the benefits it offers. And I can say that the land use codes have taken many of those recommendations and put them into action and improved upon them. We're very impressed with what is about to come before you and feel confident that if these codes are passed, we will see a new era of tree preservation and flexibility in our city, the likes of which are not present in the entire region. We feel that these codes will, in some ways, surpass many of the cities we modeled them upon. And so we would encourage you to look into these codes before they come before you on the 21st. I also want to read just a few quotes from our tree code petition, which had a voluntary field, and I'll go ahead and send these as PDFs. We had a lot of people submit comments when they signed the petition. They say, "Old-growth trees are irreplaceable and invaluable to our community. We've destroyed our planet enough, old-growth trees in particular. Stop. Build around them, or build somewhere else. Trees are our greatest asset in an area of pollution and climate change. Bellevue should have strong tree codes around tree removal, as it calls itself a city and a park. We should be protecting trees in the city and not cutting them down." I could go on, but I'll go ahead and send those over email for your reference. Thank you for your time and attention to this issue.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lee Sargent.
I bid you fond adieu. I'm glad that you're here. You have shown me during these years that you are for the city. And I think that the Lucas that we're coming up with have the flexibility to meet all needs, but it does require us to think for a while. Sometimes we think of people as being very important, and they are. They're very important. But when we start replacing the natural strengths of our system, those large trees, and we can't put them back, we may be furnished with the bodies of trees, but what is it for the people that live in the area? What is it for the affordable housing situations where it's been pointed out in the past that basically are looking like heat sinks because that's where the trees get removed from? What is it that we're doing to prepare for the future? It's a tough thing, and you people are very tough. I've seen you. I expect a lot of you, but you have shown me more than I expect. I ask that you think about this and recognize this, and I fully support the efforts that you make for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last pre-registered speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Yeah, my name is Alex Zimmerman. I'm president of Stand Up America, and I live in Bellevue almost for four years. So somebody start come to my apartment, you know what it mean? I thinking somebody want poison me. Is this a similar situation happened before election when somebody put poison in my car? Yeah, exactly. I complained to police now, I complained to police before, nothing happened. Police treat me like a terrorist, like a bandido. So old Greek, old Greek, thousand year ago, have this expression, "Look who interesting for I be dead." And I come to conclusion, yeah, Greek smart people. Yeah. So interesting is this situation only two people, critical, important, Esmer Robinson and Deputy Mayor Muhammad. Yeah. I have experienced with Muhammad before because before election, he talk to me, he threat me. Yeah. So situation right now, very simple, guys. I come and talk about this not because I'm scared, because what has happened right now here and around, you know what it mean? Look to me like you acting like a real Nazi pig, like a real fascist, like a real bandido. And policemen tend trespasses, tend complain, no one positive word. I did this, they not. And exactly this make me little bit shocked because when you open newspaper for last couple of week, two this blover from Boeing, you know what it mean, dying from Mises, you know this infection? Muses? Yeah, Merses? Yeah, Merses, yeah. So this come to my mind because I live for 40 year here, and I never hear like this before. So situation right now, very simple, guys, I have only different opinion. It's not reason for you to be a killer, a bandido, only men who have different opinion. Maybe you don't like me because I'm Jew. Maybe you don't like me because I'm stupid, but this not matter what is I doing, you know what it mean? And what is I talking? Everything what is I doing legally? So when somebody, somebody, want kill me, you know what it mean? Poison me, and make me dead, you know what it mean? Because it's very good opinion, reason for doing this, you know what it mean? I ask you simple question, stop acting like a bandido, like a Nazi, like a commie, like a Gestapo in KGB, you know what it mean? And policemen supposed to be protect, but they not care. They hate me more probably than Donald Trump. Thank you very much.
That is the end of our pre-registered list. So at this point, I would ask if there's anyone joining us in council chambers or anyone online who would like to make comment to the council, please raise your hand. And just a reminder, we have reached the limit on support of trees. We have hit three people. So any other topics are welcome. We do have one hand online. That's Joe Kuntzler. Mr. Kuntzler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Thank you for your public service. Joe Kuntzler here. I would to ask the Bellevue City Council to adopt the Redmond City Council new public items for the audience rules. I've also call on public comment defenses because frankly, you shouldn't have been spoken to, like the previous Nazi speaker spoke to you, that was totally uncalled for, and you are fair to that. I would also encourage you to consider the fact that there is a city council dev squad running around the country harassing remote comment, and I appreciate your continued commitment to remote comment because it's very important that we have access to this feature, especially as you collect federal money, state money, and also for your own residents, you may want this feature to remain because not everyone can get around easily. I really want you to really, really take a good hard look at those Redmond defenses because they were intended to fight Alex Zimmerman and his garbage and adopt them because enough is enough. And finally, I just want to say on a personal level, I love cops. Cops are great. I love the fact you putting law enforcement on the white rail. I think it's needed. I've seen people drugged out and all, and I tried to be a good Samaritan and help. I tried to use the intercom on the white rail trains on the one line, which is for case you don't know, goes from North Gate to Angle Lake, and have had subpar results. So I'll give you your time back, and thank you for your public service.
For anyone in council chambers who would like to make a comment? Okay. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So in the packet, there is, there are Parks and Community Services Boards. First, there is, their first quarter 2024 report and communications. We're not discussing that tonight, but be sure to read it. And I don't think we have a report from you, City Manager, do we? And I don't think we have a report from you, city manager, do we?
No, mayor, we do not.
Okay. So next up is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have two study session items today. One, the first one is information only, and the second one is an action item. So, city manager, would you like to introduce the first one?
Thank you, mayor. This first study session item is on the procurement diversity inclusion plan. And in 2016, as way background, the city created a plan to improve opportunities for small and diverse businesses to access our procurements. And in an effort to continue to improve, in the past year, staff's been working to seek stakeholder feedback, and tonight they want to update the council on changes to the plan that are based on what they heard from the stakeholders. So at the table tonight, we have Assistant Director Ira McDaniel and Mariel Sakaien, our program administrator. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ira.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson, and good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. As mentioned, we're here to share some progress on updating our procurement diversity inclusion plan, or PDI, which we've been working on since last August, when I was before you, with a city manager's report. Tonight's presentation is for information only. The PDI plan is an administrative policy, though our work under the plan may bring us to a space where we identify the need for new code level policy. We would be bringing that to you in the future at a later date. So we'll start tonight with a little bit more background information and data regarding the plan, as well as our process for updating it, share some of the feedback that we received during our outreach, and that helped us establish new goals for a revised plan, and then we'll talk about our next steps. The procurement diversity inclusion plan is an administrative policy, as I mentioned, that is intended to help remove structural disadvantages for small and diverse businesses who would like to work with the city. The plan intends to make opportunities available to those who help, to those who are small businesses that want to grow and succeed by working with the city. So at a high level, this helps make our economy stronger and more inclusive, and it also provides the city with an ongoing benefit because it increases the depth of competition and the pool of vendors who can supply goods and resources to the city. This work also ties directly into council's vision, and it's one of the few ways in which our internal services can help influence diversity, equity, and inclusion outcomes in the community because we are being intentional about the way in which we spend money, how we select vendors, to do the work that we're already planning to deliver on city objectives. As mentioned, the prior iteration of the plan was put together in 2016 as an offshoot of the city's diversity advantage plan, and a lot of great work was done under that. Some of the examples are up there. The city attended, or actually hosted, some annual events here at City Hall where we were bringing together prospective vendors with staff at the city who were working on delivering those projects. We have participated in some events that were hosted by others. An example of that is the Regional Contracting Forum, where vendors can come and meet with procurement staff and hear about upcoming bid opportunities. We hosted lunch and learns for vendors to help them learn a little bit more about our process, how to get onto our roster and do business with the city. And we hosted some internal training called Equity in Contracting that was for staff who are involved in the contracting process so that they could be more aware of the program and how to take the appropriate actions within their work to try and improve equitable outcomes.
Can you pull the microphone a little bit closer to you?
Yes, is this better?
We've maxed out the volume, so.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
All right. So while we've completed a lot of great work under the plan, progress under the plan elements and our work on that has stagnated, especially since 2020 with the COVID pandemic. And we've also not seen the growth in the use of small and diverse businesses that we would like to see. So an example of that is on this chart. This shows the total amount of money in millions of dollars that we spend on our various procurement functions and the proportion of that expenditure that has gone to small and diverse vendors since 2018. So for example, in 2023, you can see that the city spent about $150 million, and 10.2% of that went to small and diverse businesses, which was about $15.6 million. So the percentage has gone up and down a little bit over time with a very moderate increase, not a large increase in utilization. And in addition to not showing consistent growth, we also know that this does not represent a complete data set. For example, this does not include subconsultant data where you have a prime who is not a small and diverse firm who has brought on subconsultants who are. And it also does not include things like city credit card spending. Those are different data sets that we have yet to pull together, and we are still working on developing the right level of reporting so that we can slice and dice this data to really understand what it's telling us and how to drive our actions going forward. So at the same time, we've been receiving feedback from the community and council that we need to update our plan and really increase our level of action under this. So to that end, in the 2023 and 2024 budget, two positions were included for both the apprenticeship program and our PDI plan. And the first of those positions was filled with Mariel Sakaien, our program administrator. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to her.
Thank you, Ira. Again, thank you, council, for having me here tonight. I'm really excited to be sharing with you all the current progress we have in updating our procurement diversity inclusion plan. When I was hired in August of 2023, we hit the ground running and started the important work we needed to do. Part of this was restarting our cross-departmental represented PDI working group. Next, we scheduled our stakeholder outreach feedback sessions where stakeholders had the opportunity to weigh in on the plan and provide us the crucial feedback we needed. From there, we took the feedback and developed a list of actions that coalesced into the four main goals that drafted our new plan, and we shared this plan with city leadership, including city operations and policy team, executive management team, and our city manager's When planning our outreach sessions, we advertised them through social media outlets and our newsletters. We sent direct invitations to 600-plus vendors that are registered on our public purchase portal and had about 20-plus participants attend our outreach. These participants came from a diverse pool of businesses, IT, general services, food and beverage, and more. And when we hosted these outreach sessions, we provided stakeholders with the opportunity to share with us the difficulties and challenges that they are facing as vendors. We received this feedback and found three key themes that we are highlighting tonight. The first theme is vendor registration and technical assistance. Almost all of our vendors revealed that registering for our portal is confusing and not user-friendly, which resulted to them not being registered properly in our system. And if they're not registered properly in our system with the right classification codes, it is more than like, less than likely that they are not receiving the right information regarding our city opportunities or even be being selected off of our roster. Our technical assistant resources are hard to understand and need to be updated. It was expressed that that finding these resources are complicated, which ties into our second theme of emphasizing the importance of increased involvement and anticipation of the future events. Our stakeholders stressed the importance of hosting network events and workshops, noting that these occasions are utilized and establish a platform for sharing resources and exploring possible collaborations. Having these gatherings aid in building stronger relationships with each other and discovering the opportunities available to them. With that purpose in mind, we're going to go ahead into our third theme of leveling the playing field. A key point that was featured in our outreach is that communication regarding opportunities should be made clear and timely to all businesses, small and large. Having this also connect with our need to establish goals and targets, vendors emphasize the importance of having the opportunity to at least have their foot in the door or even just be considered for a project. When we had this outreach, we greatly appreciated the feedback we received from our vendors, and it helped us create a list of prioritized actions that developed our four goals of the new plan. Our first goal is to provide an improved technical assistance program. This comprehensive program will be a resource to guide our vendor community, ensuring they conduct business effectively with the city. And building upon this, our next objective centers on transparency and data reporting. We will achieve this by publishing regular data reports detailing procurement outcomes, spotlighting diverse suppliers, and illustrating the impact of our diversity and inclusion initiatives. Furthermore, we aim to cultivate strong and lasting relationships. This entails expanding our engagement with our vendor community through curated events and efforts demonstrating on our unwavering commitment to supplier diversity and inclusion. And our dedication extends to improving our procurement practices. We are committed to systematically enhancing our procurement processes with a steadfast focus on prioritizing equity at every step. Now with our updated plan in motion, I would love to go into our key actions for 2024. First off, we will be teaming with Tabor 100, a nonprofit association of entrepreneurs and business advocates, to introduce regular office hours. Inspired by other agencies like City of Seattle and King County, this move will make the city of Bellevue more visible and accessible to our vendor community. Next, we are revamping our registration process and giving it a complete makeover. We are revamping our materials, websites, and resources to make them easier to navigate and understand. In addition, we'll be collaborating with the economic development department to launch a new PDI newsletter. This newsletter will be a platform to enhance communication and shine a spotlight on the diverse range of businesses within the city of Bellevue. We will also be bringing back events and workshops. These gatherings will provide opportunities for businesses to learn, share resources, and collaborate. We will also be stepping up our data reporting game. We are hiring a program analyst to spearhead a data cleanup and implement a robust reporting system. Lastly, we will be working on implementing a direct purchase and vendor rotation process for small public work projects under 150K in compliance with the state's recent legislation. It is crucial to understand that these prioritized actions are aligned with our top three goals. This focus stems from the valuable feedback we received during our outreach sessions where vendors emphasized the importance of initiatives directly providing these action, these, sorry, directly providing better assistance, resources, and opportunities. And I also want to reinforce the impact these actions on our, of these, of these actions on our vendors. Since my appointment, I've been involved in assisting vendors with the registration process, and it has resulted in significant improvement with the vendors receiving communication regarding opportunities with the city. I also want to add that the view of our updated plan is transitional. We are not yet at the level to have a fully developed plan, which is why we are setting the groundwork and foundation now to continuously, continuously improve our plan and program as we move on and go forward. And now our next steps. We will be hosting an outreach session for our stakeholders to attend to continue the conversation about our updated plan. Vendors have three opportunities to participate, two in person on May 20th at Tabor 100, and the second on May 22nd virtually via Teams. And from there, we will continue the great work that we are doing to ensure the success of our 2024 program delivery. And once again, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to council for your valuable time tonight and your support to our new program. And Ira and here, Ira and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Let's start off with council member Zon.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ira, and welcome, Mariel. I am so, so excited about this. I remember when I first got on council, we were doing annual forums and had a lot of outreach from organizations that wanted to do business with the city, but, so it was really helpful to see the outreach and all of the data and information that you got from the community about how to do business with us. And Ira, I particularly want to thank you because you and I had chatted about, you know, showing up at Tabor and the Northwest Minority Builders Alliance and, and all these different organizations, as well as connecting with other public owners that are doing this work. And I think that's really going to pay dividends from the standpoint that, both from the standpoint of sharing knowledge with other owners, as well as the organizations that want to do business with us. So I'm really excited about that synergy and, and us having a space at Tabor 100. I did have a couple of thoughts on this that I wanted to just bring up. One is that as we increase participation, really making sure that our prompt pay, that we are paying in a really timely way, especially those organizations that are not used to doing work with public agencies, they may not realize you don't get paid until after the work is complete, and so that can sometimes be a challenge. And then when I was thinking about page six on the data, I would like to see it broken out by type, goods and services, consulting, and public work separately, because sometimes the percentage may not really show that we're actually making improvement in all the different areas, as well as disaggregating by the type of businesses that they are, and I would say both in terms of the number of businesses that we're helping get access, as well as the dollar spend that we're able to provide them. I think those are really important, and, and really just meeting them where they are because I think what I saw in what you got in feedback is that all of them are in different places. So I really love the pyramid that you showed in terms of the goals where it is both looking internally at ourselves, right? What's, what does our data say? What are we doing? What is the assistance that those organizations need? And ultimately, it is about the, that correct alignment, because I will say that my, the thing that keeps me up at night would be for those firms that don't really understand how to do business with a public agency, we can be the worst thing to happen to them if they get a contract that they struggle to meet. So that's something I worry about. And then lastly, just in terms of procurement practices, I love the fact that you're going to do the direct contracting. That was something I actually worked on as part of CPRB. But also, you know, just being willing to maybe lean into if there are projects where we might consider alternative public works, like a GCCM or design build, where we have found that those methods where we bring in a partner early, being able to establish shared goals around diversity and inclusion, we actually see better numbers than sometimes the traditional design bid build where you don't have that opportunity to work with a partner on how we improve the numbers. So, thank you.
Council member Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, where have you been all these years? I've been on the council for 30 years, and I've very seldom been very critical or criticized our staff because they've always done great work. But this is one, I think maybe the only one, that I have been very disappointed with. As you mentioned, 2016, 17, that's a long time ago, and Bellevue has never been really what I call example, a good example of minority contracting, for whatever reasons, you know, many years ago, 30, 40, 50 years ago. There are various reasons, but I don't think we've done enough, you know, to do that. And I raised the issue, and when council member Zon came on, that's quite a few years ago also, and she, you know, was a voice concern. And examples, Tabor 100, it's been around for 50 years. They tried, but they never come back again. What's the last time they actually contacted us? They have a lot of wonderful, successful subcontractors, but they tried, but didn't get anywhere. So I'm glad with our effort, we made the council, the staff more aware of it. So we've tried, we made things, but what's the result? I haven't seen a result. You show, you know, I was looking down, what's the metrics? You know, we had 10% in 2016, 17, and we reached now still 10.2%. And the highest we got is 12.6%. So that's not something that justify, you know, almost what, 10 years of work, you know, something's missing. What you have recommended is wonderful. I think that's the way to go, but not just talking, we got to be actually, these things should have been happening. You know, Bellevue was proud to be a city of, for small businesses, because this nation is built on small business. Small business includes, and most minorities, most women business are small business. They don't bond with a silver spoon, with a, you know, multi-billion dollar company says, gee, we are here to do business. So I think we need to really do something about pay attention, and we started way behind the eight ball, and we haven't caught up. And I think I hope this is, I hope at the beginning. I'm not going to tell you what's best way to do it. It, you know how to do it, right? I mean, if you don't, you better figure out how. People are out there. Bellevue right now, the economy recovery, our small business is what keeps the economy coming back. The major big company, their office building a half full, you know, but it's the business. We see the restaurant, we see small businesses, we see entrepreneurs, they need help. You know, we see things that they can do on their own, but one of the major businesses really is government contracts, right? Our government money spending keep going up, but the beneficiaries, not that many. So we need to really be serious about this. You know, outreach, you talk about that. Tabor 100, great, who else? People have contacted us when, you know, 10, 12 years ago, they're no longer here. They are looking for subcontracting elsewhere. They go to Seattle, they go to the port, because those guys have some money for them. They don't come to Bellevue anymore. Well, what happened to those folks?
Okay.
So that's key. So I'm not going to give you all the different things. All the words you said is right, playing level, playing field, you know, you have a building relationship, and I'm glad you're going to see Tabor 100. But reach out more, go beyond that, go beyond that, okay? We have people seeing the audience, I'm sure. Just go to Bellevue downtown, talk to any, any major.
I thought you said you weren't just telling them how to do their job.
I'm not telling them. But major contractors, they, they must have lots of smaller contractor, want to do subcontract. But you have to tell them, we want you to make those recommendations, because your contract depend on how many subcontractors, minority women are involved. Otherwise, they'll be go up, so.
Councilmember Lee. End of conversation, thank you. I think that you should follow up with an email with your great recommendations, okay?
Talk to me. I cannot force you to talk to me, so you have to talk to me, okay? I'll talk to you.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update. Certainly impressed with the work that's been done so far, and very interested in how you pick up some momentum and some of the things you have set out in front of you. So I think that's great. Look forward to checking back in at some point and hearing the update. I think the feedback I want to give is that, you know, I hope that this process is really, with the vendors, with the participants, is really complete. So it's looking at that vendor before they actually become an official vendor, and providing them possibly with some tools, like maybe a pricing tool. And I think to Councilmember Zahn's point earlier, you know, it'd be very exciting to get a contract with the city, and it says City of Bellevue on that check. But you know, if the participant hasn't been able to do the work that they need to make sure that they're, they're covered with their pricing, that they're going to be able to, to have a profit, I think it could be really detrimental to the participant and to the city. So, you know, what can we do for them upfront? And then, you know, maybe looking at kind of an initial phase, that first 90 days, and what can we do? Again, and I was not looking over your shoulder at your answers, but there's a lot of similarity here. But, you know, maybe speeding up those payments, expedited payment terms. You know, maybe there's an AP contact that could, you know, check in with these new vendors during that initial phase. You know, it, that startup phase is just so critical. And I think if there are some things we can do there, I think that's helpful, even some kind of possibly like an invoice template that, you know, made it very clear what kind of information the accounts payable team was going to need to be able to process that payment, just to move it along a little bit better. And then I think too, where, where you said that you regularly, plan to regularly seek feedback on our program and its outcomes from our small and diverse vendor community to gain insights and how to continue to improve. I think that is spot on, that's exactly going to be the, the secret here, is to have that constant kind of contact, make sure that not only is the participant doing well, but that, you know, in general, they, they have what they need to succeed. So kind of that beginning, initial, and then periodically checking back in to make sure that they have all the, the tools and support they need, that's how it's going to be really successful. So, well done, thank you, and look forward to seeing it as you, you keep on moving.
Great. Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Ira, always great to see you, thank you for the presentation. Mariel, I'll say again, welcome, I know I said that during the briefing, but I'll say it again, it's great to have you on board, great presentation, I really appreciate Councilmember Zahn and Lee's leadership in, in this area. We've had great conversation already with a number of great, I think, great action items for us to continue to, to look forward on. And let's keep looking forward and focus on, on moving forward, and not spend too much time on what we did or did not do in the past, because there's a lot of great stuff here. And when I really get focused on implementing as quickly as possible. It's, it's amazing to me, and I think I might have shared this before, that the number of different action items they have here and the prioritized actions reflect what we did with the Human Services Commission to make it more of a level playing field. You know, a lot more assistance, technical assistance, making sure that they understood how to fill out contracts and how to report on those contracts, and their work and the ROI, and all, all the rest of it. So I, I, I'm thrilled with this, with this update and the work that you've done. Appreciate the great stakeholder outreach and the, and the feedback that you've received there. I know you've got a number of others coming up, so that's ongoing. And I really see the theme of more communication, right? More one-on-one contact and, and events that you've structured to really network and learn from each other. And then that, that assistance when necessary, which is, as been mentioned by my colleagues before, so critical, especially if there's a startup or a first-time vendor, is, is really great to see. Love the partnership with Tabor 100, I think that's great as well. And then, my only question really is, is what's, what's next? I know there's some additional stakeholder work that's going to be done. When's the next time this will come back before the, before the council to report on some of the metrics that you're tracking and to see our success?
Yes, we expect to come back around early next year. This will be around the time we hire our program analysts, have better data and metrics to provide for you all, and also we'll show the current progress of our 2024 actions, and we can give you guys a progress report by then.
Okay, terrific, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you, a lot, a lot's been said, it is very interesting to have you bring this forward, and it's really exciting to see the clarity and the timeliness that you've infusing into this program. And, you know, programs grow and you learn and everything, and I, I think this is something that actually you're working on and presenting is something that staff does quite often, and looking at how we can improve things and all. And frankly, this all applies to the council as well. It's just the organization, we're all, you know, working together on this in a collaborative way. Really exciting to see the way you're putting it together in terms of programming and recognizing things that you learned from, you have to go through the process and then you learn from that, you can't look forward and say, well, we're going to have a problem with this or whatever. And I think you've done a good job of that, and sometimes things get behind. We are, we are all doing, you know, sometimes we have programs that we could have done something four years ago, we didn't. So the important thing is, and what I'm excited about is, yes, we didn't have the best thing going now, we have this now. And let's focus on that part of it, and how we really go forward. And the support and approval by the council has been, is always very important. And so we're getting good conversation, and, you know, I like, I think we'd all like to be kept up to, to speed in not, not too long way out, that kind of, it's helpful just to be able to see what, how it's going, everything. And I do appreciate, again, what, actually, Councilmember Noonhouse said, is we don't need to dwell much on the past, we learn from the past, but what we really need to focus on now is what you, you demonstrate that you have it in line, and you're going forward on that. So I hope that's what we really put the energy on. And, and the council can help with that, and helping look forward. And I think that's where we always need to be. The past is the past, we learn from it, but the future is what we're working on, and you're really doing a great job, and I really appreciate that and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. How are you doing?
Thank you so much, Mariel. I know you started in August, so I don't know why they're welcoming you. You are now a local City of Bellevue employee, and you have achieved lots of results. Thank you so much, and thank you to this body, Councilmembers Zahn and Lee, for their leadership on this. I have two quick questions. One is in slide nine, you have on the bottom a new procurement practices. Do you have any examples to share with us what some of those new procurement practices will look like in future?
One is that we may look to pattern some, a new process similar to the state legislature that was recently passed that we mentioned previously, where we might create a direct purchase with a vendor rotation process, and expand that from just small public works to other types of procurement.
And. We are also looking at establishing a better evaluation criteria for all departments to, I guess, uniform everything in a more standard policy, where WIMBs or minority-owned businesses can have better chances and opportunities when being evaluated for projects and bids.
Thank you, looking forward to see all of those new practices. My second question is, I know there is, in slide six, you have a great data that shows the percentage difference. Besides that, do you have any measure, or city measure that can, can measure the success and impact of this updated procurement diversity inclusion plan over the next two years? Again, obviously, beside showing some increase in that percentage.
A couple of things, one is, Councilmember Zahn already brought this up, but instead of just looking at the spend total and aggregated, splitting that up a little bit, and looking also at the number of new vendors who have registered. At this point, we know that there's a lot more that we have to be measuring from a data standpoint. And so part of why this is a transitional plan and that we will be iterating on is because we need to collect more of that data and find the right ways to, to use it in order to generate those sort of targets from where we go from here. So the other piece that we're really looking at is the, the action items that we've identified for 2024, what is our progress on those? So that's a, a bit of an internal progress check on, are we doing the things that we said that we were going to do? And then we'll be developing our outcome metrics over the next year or two.
Thank you, I appreciate you both, thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm just really excited to hear about this and to have you on board working on this, both of you. I just met with the Filipino Chamber Association in Seattle last week, and they were talking about how impossible it is to submit bids for jobs. A small business just doesn't always know how to do that. And so I was bragging about this because I had, you, we had met earlier about it, and everybody in the room was just so impressed that the city of Bellevue was really working so hard to make it easier for a diverse group of small businesses to get some of these jobs. So thank you for all the work you're doing. I have two questions for you. Are you partnering with Startup 425 in case there are entrepreneurs or new businesses that are vendors that could be using this program?
I believe Startup 425 is with our Economic Development Department, and yes, we'll be partnering with them to see what other resources or other opportunities we can get to further our connections with the small diverse business community.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the other question, this is kind of like a, an example of somebody I met at that small business event. She had a flagging company, construction flagging company, and she was, just had no idea how to submit a bid for a project. And I was wondering, do, are we going to be able to offer guidance for people like that?
Yes, one of the great things is they will have good access to me, and I'll be able to help them with their vendor registration process or any questions they may have, which is why we looked at partnering with Tabor 100 to establish office hours. And we are looking at starting our workshops where vendors can learn from other vendors who have more experience in contracting and doing business with the city.
Okay, great. So how would they reach you? Just use your City of Bellevue email, or do you have a separate email for, with working with Tabor?
Yes, it would be straight to my City of Bellevue email, and once we revamp our procurement website, I will be right there highlighted.
Okay, so it'd be msakayan.
Yes.
At Bellevewa.gov.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Carlson, would you like to introduce the next study session item? This is an action item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we have Genesi Atkins, our Chief External Affairs, and Katie Kasimba-Halsey here, Acting Assistant Director for Intergovernmental Relations. And they are going to present to you a draft of the federal agenda, 2024-25 federal agenda. And this agenda conveys the city's highest vision and principles, as well as it does provide a clear sense of what Bellevue is seeking from the federal government, what we're looking for and what we're, will be supporting. So they'll present it tonight, and they are requesting action if the council is prepared for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Genesi.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening to talk about our federal relations program and consideration of a 2024-2025 federal agenda. I think we're going to go through, kind of at a relatively medium or high clip, what we are bringing before you for discussion this evening. And the first half of that will be led by my colleague Katie, so I'm going to turn it over directly to her, and then we'll keep going.
Thank you, Genesi, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council, Katie Kasimba-Halsey. As our City Manager mentioned, we are seeking your feedback for the consideration of potential adoption of the 2024-2025 federal agenda, and this would really help us to identify our federal priorities and budget for our advocacy efforts. So as you all are probably familiar, we come to you about this time each year in the development of a federal priorities agenda or federal legislative agenda. In this particular case, we're looking to talk to you about the 2024-2025 agenda. This is really our federal compass. We use the federal agenda as a way for us to really identify the highest level vision and principles that we would want to pursue with our federal delegation or federal government different agencies. It shares a clear sense of what Bellevue is asking for, what we might be applying for or are applying for, and what we'd be supporting over the course of the next year. This agenda has been developed in partnership with our departments and feedback from our federal lobbyists and staff. While we look at this cumulatively over year to year, we also look at those projects or issues that would most align with your council vision and priorities. And with those new refreshed priorities, we were able to really incorporate that into this agenda. We really focused on projects and programs that are likely to be funded in the near term, including projects that might be shovel-ready but may need some additional funding. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide. So the current context of Washington DC, the other Washington, with coordination both internally and externally, and a lot of support and encouragement from all of you, Bellevue has been quite successful in a number of different programs and grants over the course of the last year. Several of those are the SS4A grant, or the Safe Streets and Roads for All grant, and also the SMART grant, which is really focused on connecting technology and a safer roadway system. So City of Bellevue staff have worked diligently to submit grant applications, and we have received 1.43 million dollars for SMART in early 2024, and 2.78 million dollars in late 2023 for SS4A. As you heard at the March 25th council meeting, we were also quite successful in our 2024, FY24 is what we say, appropriations process, including three earmarks or congressionally-directed funding programs. You heard already from the departments on those, but I'll just refresh your memory, it was for the Bellevue and Redmond electric fire engine and charging infrastructure. It was for the Bellevue and Redmond Electric Fire Engine and Charging Infrastructure, for the Bellevue Body Police or Bellevue Police Body worn Camera Program, and then also the Digital Equity for Affordable Housing. And we were very thankful to our congressional delegation, and I hope you extend our thanks and gratitude to them when you travel to DC. Now, the FY25 appropriations process is underway. There was some delay due to leadership changes in both the House and the Senate, but we are fully underway now, and we have submitted three earmarks or congressionally-directed spending for this upcoming federal funding request cycle. Congress will allow the consideration of these programs, and they are quite strict in how they consider them, so we had to be very certain of what we were submitting. But what we will be hearing, waiting to hear back from them on, is a follow-up submittal on the fire engine, the electric fire engine, the Lake Washington Sanitary Sewer Lakes Program project, and then also a submission for the Bellevue Grand Connection I-405 Crossing. And we should hear back on whether the congressional offices will be submitting those to the Appropriations Committee. We should be hearing that back relatively shortly. So on your next visit, which I know is coming up very soon, this is an opportunity to thank our congressional delegation, give them some insights as to what we're thinking about in terms of our funding needs and priorities, and of course, our federal agenda.
Thank you, Katie. So what we did this year in developing a 2425 federal agenda was we heard feedback from you and from our federal consultants that the structure we've used more recently for the state legislative agenda would be something good to extend to the way we're setting up the federal agenda. So the way we've laid it out this year, it has really three main components. A section where we really outlined the priority issues to elevate for this coming year, additional areas of federal interest, and that gives us kind of wide coverage for issues that might come up in Congress or locally that we want to raise with federal agencies or congressional offices. And then there is kind of a really good, broad and flexible reference of the city council vision and goals and to the STAs to say, hey, if something does pop up that we don't even see right now, but that will advance your priorities or our STAs, we want to give ourselves the latitude to go, hey, you know what? That would make a really big difference toward making progress toward those goals or that vision. So that's the way we've laid it out this year. And one of the things I'll say very broadly is there is a lot of continuity from the prior agenda to this one. Federal issues in general, not unlike state issues or lots of other policy, there's quite a long through line. We try to be not kind of in and out or up and down. We try to be pretty consistent and build momentum and make continued progress on a lot of key themes, key priority projects and programs. So you will see a large amount of continuity from the last agenda to this one, organized differently to really elevate forward the things that we think are going to be very relevant this year, and then to make sure we have broad coverage for all the other things that might come up or that may not be ripe in 2425, but that may be just around the corner, because that is often things kind of move forward, other things kind of pull back. So it gives us kind of that broad latitude. So I'll spend a few minutes here talking about those priority issues. We have them in three categories. The first one is transportation and mobility. Here, we're calling out three main areas of focus in this category. The first one is East Rail. This is a longstanding area of priority interest for the city this year. And this, and as you kind of hear the theme, they're off, we're trying to bubble up the things that have real relevance for this current year. East Rail in particular is very keenly positioned, we hope, to receive a RACE grant through King County to fund. They put in a request for $25 million to help close the outstanding funding gap. It is critical funding to help close that remaining portion from, you know, kind of the downtown-ish, Wilberton-ish area down across the I-90 Steel Bridge down toward Renton. There, there's so much awesome connectivity throughout that north-south corridor, but we need that chunk. So we want to go help echo and amplify that application from King County this year. The Grand Connection Crossing over I-405, this is something we've been talking to our delegation about for a few years now. We've taken it from kind of twinkle in our eye and a great novel idea to something that we now have moved into early design. And we have kind of told them that it's coming, that it's the the train whistle on this, to mix metaphors, is getting louder. And so this year, as Katie just told you, we've now submitted an earmark request toward the final design funding. This is also continuing the drumbeat toward what we expect to be in the next year to a very significant application for construction funding through a competitive grant at USDOT. So again, we're really trying to build that momentum and that continuity on our high-priority programs. And then finally, smart city technology. There are a lot of different ways that smart city technology comes up and has an application. Most recently, in January of this year, we were very happy to receive, successfully compete for and receive a SMART grant from USDOT. This has to do particularly with pedestrian safety and is managed out of DOT. A lot of smart city technology is, as I said, has a lot of different applications, but is typically a marriage between our IT department and our transportation department. And so we're very excited to keep kind of peeling back all the different ways that smart city technology can help take Bellevue to where it's headed in the future. The second main category is around essential and sustainable infrastructure. We're calling out a few key things here. The first one is funding for utility infrastructure. So a couple of connections here. Just last week, was it two weeks ago? I think it was last week, you heard from Cameron Gurrell from the Wastewater Treatment Division of King County about how vast the challenges are facing our wastewater infrastructure. And those important infrastructure costs get passed down to Bellevue ratepayers. We need more federal funding to flow to wastewater systems so that they can help fund the infrastructure updates that are frankly being mandated at the federal level and by our State Department of Ecology. Otherwise, if they are born solely at the local level, that will ripple down to us very directly. And this is really that essential, you know, take it for granted, infrastructure that we have to have reliable and kept up to date. It's also very related to our other earmark requests related to the lake lines. The lake lines that run under Lake Washington are critical, again, mostly invisible infrastructure, but they're aging quite rapidly. It's going to be a very comprehensive construction project when we're ready to move into that phase. What we've requested here is the program development phase. We've asked for some assistance with that so that we can identify what the financing plans might be and what the project phasing might look like. And so then, again, laying down a marker to probably come forward to try to get either a super-low-interest loan or try to pull down any federal grant funding that is available. But right now, there's very little federal grant funding available, and we want to help echo the call of King County and others to say, hey, we we need more infrastructure support at, we need to layer together different sources of funding, and this is one of them that is lacking. Reducing climate pollution, this is something that is consistent with our ESI focus at Bellevue. We're very excited that we have just started to tap into some of the federal funding that is coming down to the state for climate programs so that we can help migrate toward. You remember that great wedge analysis you received from Community Development and that team recently? Making sure the federal government stays committed to providing those resources and incentives is very important. Our earmark request, our third and final earmark request this year related to our electric fire engine is very much in the direction of leading the way as a city toward how we can convert our fleet, how we can improve both community health and safety as well as climate emissions. And then finally, affordable internet access and connectivity. We want to help close the digital divide. We were very excited to win that pilot program funding last year from Representative Adam Smith that will help us really pilot free affordable internet, excuse me, free internet, not just affordable, better than affordable, at some selected affordable housing locations so that we can really try to provide ladders of opportunity across Bellevue, especially for the people who really need those doors open for them. And so we're very excited to continue to do that. Our IT department has been working with their state counterparts to pull down federal funds that way. For a lot of federal funding, and you've heard this from Katie on prior occasions, we have to go through the state or through PSRC to access those funds. A lot of the internet accessibility funding flows in that direction. We can't apply for it as much directly ourselves. So we want to keep that elevated. Housing and safety net programs is our third and final priority issues category. The two big issues here are the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. This is, or as we sometimes call it or refer to it as LI-Tech. This is critically important and massively oversubscribed. You heard about this recently from Community Development when they came here with the Affordable Housing Targets Update. This is vastly oversubscribed in Washington and a critical funding source for Bellevue Affordable Housing Units. We're really lucky that in our delegation, two of our four members are the prime sponsors of the legislation to not just renew, but expand, double the LI-Tech eligibility for different types of preservation and acquisition of units. We want to continue to push that forward so that it can really get traction in DC. And then finally, resources for working families. This is something we elevated in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber when we were there in December. Affordable childcare for working families is good for everyone. It's good for families, it's good for employers, it's good for communities. But this is a really immense expense for a lot of families. And there is a different pieces of legislation moving currently through Congress and then kind of building momentum because some critical tax breaks actually expire next year and will have to be extended or revisited. So we want to help keep a focus there because that's important to our working families in Bellevue as well as our employers who want to be able to get people back to work who want to be at work. In terms of next steps, we have a number of things that are coming up. We would love for you to give us feedback on our federal agenda, either adopting it here or at a future meeting. As Katie said at the outset, it really is kind of our North Star as we do our work throughout the year. We will have a visit to Washington DC for the Mayor and the Deputy Mayor June 5th and 6th in Washington. That'll be a great time, as Katie said, to show appreciation for the congressionally-directed spending that they have sent our way. We feel very fortunate for this last round. And just to thank them again for our relationship, it's a way that we, you know, pay respect to them by going to Washington DC, though I know a lot of you see them here in District all the time because they're so great about coming back to District 1 and District 9. We will track the appropriations process. As Katie said, the next step, we should get news in the next week or two, will be whether or not the House offices have been able to move forward. Any of Bellevue's requests, they are limited in how many they can advance, so it is competitive. And so we know that we can't always be as fortunate as we were in this last round, but we're eager to hear about next steps. But it will probably go not just to the end of September, which is the end of the federal fiscal year, it'll probably go beyond because it's a presidential election year. That means we might end up in continuing resolution land, probably till just past the elections. So just being pragmatic, we're probably headed in that direction. We are already talking about and getting prepared for August recess opportunities for our congressional staff and their members. We did a lot of that last year. It was wonderful, though it kept us pretty busy during what is often a slow time for the City of Bellevue. We're getting excited about that. And then we're doing ongoing engagement with delegation of partners. And a couple of things that I didn't remember to get onto here, a couple of things. One, we know that you all, whether it's through the Bellevue Chamber, through NLC, I know that you are working really concertedly to make sure that you're bringing opportunities back to Bellevue. And that's really important to keep that year-round relationship going, so we appreciate that. Likewise, we got a phone call or an email just yesterday from staff in one of our offices wanting to dig in on kind of a technical issue, a safety issue with one of our departments. So we're hearing from them all the time because they look at us as a resource, which is so terrific. We want to be able to be the first place they turn when they have different types of questions or want to know more about issues. So it really is something that we don't just, we do adopt this agenda annually, but the relationship is really ongoing throughout the year. It just has different kind of phases and flows. So we really appreciate you taking the time to look over this and give us your feedback. And then we'll, we're eager to hear from you about what you want to do this evening or at a future meeting in terms of this draft federal agenda.
Great. Thank you so much.
Happy to hear your questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Liedler, start with you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the presentation. I think this is, I've been on the council for so long, this is really very wonderfully planned and thought, sought through and thoughtful, you know, in seeking what's important for Bellevue and for the region and what's available, you know, from other places, specifically federal government. So I've been working with you very closely, so I know, I respect what you've done, you know, I appreciate what you have done. But I also want to say that you said yourself, you know, the whole city is a team. And I always want to emphasize that the city council is part of the team. And I appreciate what you just said. We bring our own different perspectives and different opportunities from our own separate relationship that we build and connections. So I think we appreciate, you know, you hopefully take that into consideration. So I'm going to just say a few, a couple of things, but I want to make another preamble. Just because I may have said that there's something that's not quite what should be in the past, doesn't mean that I'm criticizing you guys, okay? People change, everything's changed. And also, doesn't mean it's not important. We don't know where we're going to go to improve unless we know where it's been, okay? So that's important. So I really like your three things. I think the transportation and sustainability and essential and sustainable infrastructure, housing and safety net, because you know what's available, you know what the council priorities are, you know what the community needs. I think that's very good. I just have one concern of one area. The other one, I think it's great. The one area is the transportation and mobility. I understand that what you describe as East Rail, $25 million. You mentioned Grand Connection, and how much money are we looking for under Grand Connection? Do you know?
I think, was it? So in the application we made for congressionally-directed spending, it was for $2.5 million toward final design expenses.
Just for design, yeah. And then the smart cities in technology, that's about $2.5 million. Okay. I have some reservations for that. I like the title, transportation mobility, very important. But what goes on there, to me, I think it doesn't quite address our need for real transportation and mobility. What we have is we're looking at 405, we're looking at I-90, we're looking at 520, we're looking at the mobility accessibility in and out of downtown Bellevue, and also now extending to Belvoir Corridor. So, and we're talking about Vision Zero, transportation, pedestrian, it's all part of transportation system. And that takes a lot of money, okay? And I don't see any one item or more than one that's identified that can get us there. I know it comes through from state government, a lot of it does, but it comes from federal government. Then it goes to the state, it goes to PSRC, it goes to, you know, all the people, but it all starts with federal government. So we need to be working with our partners from the state, from county, from PSRC and businesses to advocate for the transportation system that I'm talking about. That's infrastructure, that's important. We need to have multi, I'm not going to use the word be, multi-million dollar to do some of that stuff, right? Because our 405, for example, we are still trying to wait for money the state promised to give it to us 10 years ago. It's all there, appropriate, but we have no money. The federal government's got to give the money because that's where it come from. So I think we need to figure out how to get our So I think we need to figure out how to get our hands specifically on those things. I know NLC, that we, you know, some of us have been going there. They've got various programs, sometimes they get information we get. And I always forward to you guys, I know I do. But I want to be sure that we take advantage of all those, wherever they come from. And then let's figure out, how can we get our partnerships together? The example, the model that we're talking about, you mentioned about utility, you know, RWQC, when we heard. King County got smart now under, on the RWQC, King County Council. That's why Dow Constantine, you know, county executive, and Baducci, Cordia, they went to Washington DC just a few months ago. And they wanted to get more money to come to fix the utility infrastructure, which is waste division, wastewater. Wastewater affect clean water, clean water affect environment, affect regulation, affect growth of this area, affects economic development, affect the housing. Because if these things expensive, there's no cheap housing. No matter how big the house, if we cannot afford people to live there, doesn't matter. So I think I would like to see some real emphasis. Give me one project, two projects on transportation, especially using technology, that's fine. But has to be alleviating congestion, speeding up people's travel, whatever it is, okay? Now I don't see it, that's the only thing. So it's not criticism, but just reminding you from the information I get.
Can I point it out to you, councilmember?
From the need I see.
No problem. So you're emphasizing two things that are terrific, and I really appreciate it. So first, on wastewater, and the county executive and councilmember Baducci in the recent visit, we've actually been coordinating, thank you so much for being the vice chair of RWQC. We've been coordinating very closely with King County. And actually, the language we have under funding for utility infrastructure on page two mirrors exactly the language they took to Washington DC. Because we're trying to very clearly echo that request that they are making. Because as the wastewater discharger, we, you know, they're kind of the tip of that particular spear, but we are trying to go right on the heels of their visit and say, yes, what they said, we need more of it. And our plan is to elevate that with your help and with others through NLC as well, to say this is something really important to cities. So that's, this is language that is exactly in alignment with King County's. And then on page four, going back to transportation.
Can I stop there for a minute?
Yes.
I like, I like what you said. We can help at NLC. Because what we need, we can help, you know, the county has its own organization as well. I'm sure, I hope, King County is doing with that. We can bring, we can show our help and leadership to the county as well by going to NLC, say, hey, you know, because we have the other cities in nationally city, they all have similar needs and we can collaborate with them. We can make sure that we are more ready and we are a model. So it just build up leverage, build up partnership, that's all, okay? So.
On transportation, understood and appreciated and yes.
Yes.
On transportation, on page four, we've tried to not make this too long of a document. It will, I think at four pages, it will, and with whatever editing we need to do, it's going to be a good kind of folio for us to use and not too overwhelming or voluminous. But it is in here on page four, around the 405 corridor. We talk about how important the corridor is, the intersection and interchanges at I-90 and 520, how this is a key pipeline for the east side. The thing that we've heard in talking with Washington DC the last few years, they've said, hey, we put all of our big transportation money into the bipartisan infrastructure law. And that kind of, without getting into too much details, that money has been flowing in two directions. One, to the federal government, to the agencies, where we can apply directly to things like safe streets and roads for all, which is great. And then they sent a bunch of it over to WashDOT. And WashDOT then took it and pushed it out through Move Ahead Washington. And then we were the recipient of a lot of that funding through the Move Ahead Washington package in 2022. You'll see in our next state legislative agenda that we will present for your feedback, you'll see 405 way up above the fold. This will be, so that what they've kind of said to us about 405 is, yeah, we gave that money to your state. You need to go knock on the door at your state. That was, we sent our federal money to your state and to your PSRC. That's where you'll find this federal funding, or you can apply for our competitive grant programs. And WashDOT, as the owner of the 405 corridor, they're the lead on that corridor and its projects. And we are absolutely there to help champion and support them. But most of our coalition effort will be focused on Olympia next year. So it's, we're trying to use the right tool for the right kind of opportunity. And so we will be elevating that significantly in the next state legislative session. But in this current year at the federal level, the opportunity is, we're poised better for the opportunity for East Rail and for the Grand Connection crossing. That will shift year to year, but those are the two, and smart city technology. Those are the things that seem ready for elevation at this moment, but 405 is not gone. The interchanges with I-90 and 520 are not gone. They're definitely a key interest to the city of Bellevue. And so you'll find them still in this document, and again, very consistent with last year.
Thank you for showing us this. One thing is, we would like to maybe know some, know more about it. One thing, just last one, last bit, when you talk about technology.
They're just going for an offline, well, why don't you take this offline? Because it's really fun for you, but we've got a whole set of councilmembers who'd like to discuss this.
We all should listen, though. We should all listen.
Okay.
Because you may say, you don't.
We don't, councilmember Stokes, we don't need to weigh in. So let's move on to, I'll let you continue your conversation. No, I'm going to let you continue this later. Councilmember Zion, how about you?
I would implore councilmembers, okay? If you want to learn more, know more about this whole conversation, please, talk to us, okay? If you're not going to be talking about it, I hope the staff understands, right? Thank you.
Councilmember Zion.
Thank you. You know, this is such an important piece, right? Because we know that we can't accomplish everything that we need on our own. It'll take local, state, and federal advocacy and dollars. So I really appreciate this, it's a bit like threading a needle, and I understand that. I like, I agree with these three focus areas that you have there. I do have a comment, though, and that is that when I look at the three that are, I'm going to call them above the fold, right, focus areas, it seems like they're a mixture of an ask and then already received or just a statement. So I would like to see that all of them have something that is a, the reason it's above the fold is because we have an ask. And so if I look at it, the first couple has an ask, but the smart city technology, it seems like there's not really an ask there, other than to say that we want some funding. So if it's something that we already got some money for and we're not actually lobbying for anymore at the moment, I'm just wondering, you know, what our intent is there. And then utility piece has something, but the climate pollution, again, it says we're eager to access resources. I'm not sure there's an ask there when we are lobbying, so I just think about what is our ask for it to be above the fold? And then the same with the internet access. If it's already something that they've done and what we're doing is thanking them, I don't, maybe that's a slightly different category of appreciation versus the, here's my above the fold ask. So that was just one of my thoughts there. And then as I look at these pieces, some other feedback on the LI-Tech. We encourage its expansion in this Congress. I'm wondering if we could have a little bit more specificity in there about, what I understand is even if they increase the funding, because our poverty level is so much higher, unfortunately, than other states, it still may not have much flowing to us. So when we say we encourage its expansion, how might we think about an expansion that gets a little bit more money into Washington State versus other states that have a higher need? So that was one thing that I remember in the Affordable Housing 101, they spoke about, that even if they increase costs, it may not come to us. And then on, on some of these others, I was seeing the same. The environmental health one, it doesn't really talk about, like, what is our ask versus a general statement? Another example would be under workforce development. The city supports regional efforts to build interest in steam fields. I mean, are we just looking for building interest? Or we really want them to infuse some funding that we can have in order to help us with workforce development? And so I guess part of this is, I feel like there's a mixture of things embedded in here. And I just wonder if that was really the intent, or if we want to either have appreciation, ask, and then further ask below the line, but there is an ask in there of some kind. So those are, that was one of the comments I had. And then some questions. I don't see anything in here necessarily on economic development and commerce. And I just wonder if below the fold, we might want to include something in there, especially in light of the presentation we just had on procurement, diversity, and inclusion program, plan. And then we know that we have a lot of human services needs. And so I'm wondering if there is anything below the fold that we might also want to, if the opportunity presents itself to have that ask. And then lastly, actually, just closing with a comment. I'm excited that we are working with NLC. It sounds like with their infrastructure hub, that we're looking at pursuing that. That's, you know, free resources to help us get some grant funding. And then the recent one on economic opportunity, technical assistance grants. So I appreciate that. But I did have that question about just that mixture.
Thank you for digging in, I really appreciate that. So the, it was intended to be a mix. It is not intended to be so tactical that it is only requests. I have seen and even inherited some federal legislative agendas that have just been like a wish list of requests for this and the other thing. And I think we're trying to make sure that we accomplish it if, where we do have asks or in recognition of things that they have done, or, you know, in support of our city objectives. But it's not intended to be strictly asks. It is intended to be, to elevate those, kind of give those timely asks elevation, but also to say, hey, these are things that are important and they may still be coming. They may not have an ask in front of them today. But I think we're, as we get feedback from the collective body of all of you, I think if there are things that folks want to elevate or things you want to deprioritize, that's the whole point of having this conversation. So you're right, there are those couple of things that you pointed out, don't have a specific ask today. The one thing about the things that you did point out, particularly around climate and internet access, unlike the bipartisan, and I have kind of the subject matter expert just to my right conveniently. But one of the things that was wonderful about the bipartisan infrastructure law is it allowed cities to be able to apply more directly for a lot of those competitive funds. A lot of the other major investment programs have had less of that. And so we haven't been able to apply as directly, for example, for some of the cybersecurity and information technology grants. We have to go through the state to get those. And so in many cases, what would be great is working through our delegation and federal agencies to try to create more of that direct pathway to some of those federal funds. So that's like a more nuanced conversation. But we do want to say, these things are important to us. We want to be able to capitalize on these federal funds. But we don't want to get so tactical in the document that we're saying, like, could you please change it so that we could do X, Y, and Z? But we are trying to say, this is really important to us. We would love to be able to take better advantage of those programs and not maybe necessarily have to go through a different level of government to do that. But your point is really well-made, and I think we're open to hear the feedback from all seven of you. I will say, I was checking back on some of our earlier federal agendas. We did have, we've kind of taken the items that were previously under kind of an umbrella of economic development and broken them out. So previously in economic development, we had workforce development, we had 5G readiness, we had cybersecurity. We've tucked those all into this agenda, but we haven't grouped them all under the heading of economic development. We've kind of broken them out as independent areas of interest that we would want to pursue. But we can kind of.
So that might be something to look at, otherwise, there's a lot of discrete pullout items. If they could be bucketed a little bit, it may be easier to read. So I appreciate that, I just needed that context. And I really like what you said about the BIL. Maybe in the transportation mobility, we actually start off with appreciating the BIL and direct funding for cities and then continue on with the rest of the information. Because I hear you saying, it's both to thank them for the things that they've done already and then embedded within it are some of our asks, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Katie, any miss anything? Okay.
Okay, councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Justice Katie, great job updating our previous federal agenda. I see a lot of similar themes and issues that have come forward, which is great and which we need to do to maintain that communication that these are still our priorities and rightly. So great comments thus far and would echo a lot of them. Couple of things that I noticed, I just wanted to point out a little bit or ask some additional questions. One, I did not see any mention of the arts in here, which is kind of, I believe, a critical piece to our overall economic development plan. So I was wondering if that's something that we could still, I know it's late, but even still include in here, even if there's not something that we could earmark or there's a bill that we might want to take advantage of, but maybe under that economic development piece, I think it'd be great to include that. You know, for me, under the housing and, I guess, overall well-being of our residents, is there any bill right now, or is there any specific ask around childcare? Because, you know, some, you know, kind of echoing councilmembers on, some of these seem like statements and others, specific asks. And is there a congressional bill already in play for childcare? Because hardly a day goes by that that is not one of the top, if not the top expense for middle-class and lower-income families in the city of Bellevue. And they are hurting because of it. That on top of the property taxes and all the other inflationary items, it is very difficult for them to stay in the city and maintain their family. So is there anything there that we can do right now? Or is that just, because I did see, I think, limited in there. So is this on the radar of any of our congressional delegation right now? I'll pause there while you can answer that one.
Yes, the great, the answer is yes, there are opportunities that are pending right now. So our senior senator, Senator Murray, is actually the sponsor of the Childcare for Working Families Act. And so she's trying to push that through, and I believe it has bipartisan sponsorship to try to advance that. And I think it was introduced just this spring. So it's very timely, she's trying to build some momentum for that. This, of course, will be a really challenging year to get progress before the elections. But we, you know, those opportunities open up, especially when things get bundled together.
Yeah.
The other thing that they are already starting, and it has even stronger bipartisan support for, is revisiting the child tax credit. So the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act from the prior presidential administration actually expires next year. So they're already starting to talk about how to manage the child tax credit, which has been really important to, you know, working class and lower-income families. And they're trying to potentially bring that to a vote in the Senate. There are a lot of actually very outspoken conservative senators who are saying, let's go. Let's make this happen for families because it's something we can deliver that will impact and benefit them immediately. So those are the two things, one of which is the legislation that's already introduced. It was introduced about five years ago, too, but they've reintroduced it with kind of a fresh take. I can get you more information about that. This has also been something, we've heard support from the community, both from nonprofits and from the private sector. There's a lot of support in our community for echoing these specific requests of our delegation.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And on public safety, so specifically you call out the cameras for Bellevue PD. But I know we've already started the rollout process there. I know we've already started the rollout process there, and I, I believe we're making great progress there. Is that something that we still need some additional funds, is this, or should we be looking at other, other asks or other needs within the department to, to fund that, or is there still a, a piece that needs to be funded?
I will kick that off and then turn to Katie in a second, who's been working with our police department on this.
Okay.
So we are rolling that out, you're exactly right, we're rolling that out, and it's new, but it's so far, so good.
Okay.
We are now talking with the Department of Justice about what this can look like to access the burn grant through the Department of Justice, so that we can maximize what we can leverage of that federal funding. But there are additional components that we want to continue the conversation with, not just with Justice, but also our delegation. Katie, do you want to add in anything?
I actually don't have anything else to add, except for that process just kicked off with the Department of Justice. So we'll be going through the application process, it's in addition to already being awarded through the federal appropriations process, this is just a formality, and then we can use that federal funding directly for the body camera program. And then, as Jenice mentioned, we'll continue to assess different opportunities as well.
Okay, well, if I heard you correctly, though, let's just make, you know, double check that, that that need still exists, and because maybe there's other needs that we need to address, or add on to-
Yes.
-in terms of, in terms of this grant. And then I'll just circle back on the arts question. Is, is that something that would be worthwhile to add here as, as a piece of our economic development plan?
So, that's a great question. We might need to phone a friend at, with Lori Hoffman to find out.
Okay.
I did check back, I brought our old agendas, just to make sure, and the only prior reference there was to arts funding, so I don't know what there is that we could directly access. Part of what it talks about in prior lead agendas is just trying to support investments in capacity building-
Mm-hmm.
...for economic development partnerships, and it lists the Arts District in Belred as an example of where that might be a beneficiary. But I don't know if there are any direct opportunities, and that can be something that we check in with arts about.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Okay.
So, we're hearing things that people would like to maybe consider adding to our lead agenda. Do you want to bring it back after you've thought about the input?
Yeah, we could bring you back a revised version for you all to take up next week.
Would that, City Manager, would that work with the, our agenda?
Yes, actually, that would work next week, as possible for returning.
Okay. I just wanted to, because I'm hearing about arts, police funding, childcare, economic development. Any other glaring omission? All right, we're not done talking, we're going to hear from Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the update. I think this, what you've laid out here is, is really smart, and I really like the way you go about your work, really good and strategic. I've had the chance to be there, to see you in action, and I thought it was great. And I do think that some of the, the different priorities you list, and kind of the way you list them, you know, setting the table for what's to come, and last December, when we were there, there was plenty of talk of the Grand Connection crossing. And it was clear to all of our legislators that we will be back, and we will be asking you for it. So planting those seeds and kind of setting the table, I think is great. I think the priority issues that you've laid out are sufficiently broad, but not overly so. I think it provides the opportunity for us to come back to something specific if the need arises. So while it may not be listed, you know, we've certainly introduced the topic, so to speak, and something we can be a little more specific about. I do think the priority issues, transportation and mobility, essential and sustainable infrastructure, housing and safety net, I think those are great. I do think, too, as, as has already been mentioned, that working with the National League of Cities, Councilmember Lee Anzon, and others who might be interested, but to get as much support from them as we can, I think that is really smart. And then, too, it was mentioned about a few critical grant applications that have been submitted. So I think, I'm glad to hear from my colleagues, but, you know, considering those, considering that the trip to DC is coming up here in just a few short weeks, I'm certainly glad to, you know, have this conversation be continued, see what you bring back, but also completely comfortable with just moving the agenda forward tonight. So I'd be, I'd be completely in favor of that, I think we, we have enough there in what you've presented to make sure that, you know, going forward, we can be very effective in DC. So, thank you for the presentation, and however my colleagues want to go, I'm good with, but I'd be just as glad to approve the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Hamilton's comments, I endorse that. I think that's, that's the approach. One thing that bothers me, and I think we got into this, was you, you had set out a very clear, specific things you wanted to talk about in these areas, and we've talked about a lot of other areas at various times, and put into this. And what, what it turned into be is, is wanting to actually look at everything and talk about, and we weren't prepared for that. I mean, that's, you're, you're doing a great job of responding to these things, kind of without having, you know, looking at it that way. And I, I think it would help if we, if the council looks at it, and the staff presents and says, tonight, we're going to present on ABC, and we'll do D, E, and F later, or we already have this in here, would help a lot, because we spend a lot of time going into things that were not part of what was on the agenda tonight. And so, I think that, and sometimes these are things we've talked, gone back to, and we kind of roll these things around over and over and over. And when you look at, at the materials being there, what's been presented, all these issues have actually been looked at, but, so, it, it would help us, and I think help you, and we need to focus on it, is how to, what, what is our job tonight, what are we going to focus on tonight? And if we say we have, we do that, and then we say we have some other things we want to talk about, then we could put that on another agenda, but we end up with kind of conversations back and forth, and there, and when you read the material, a lot of the story been answered is in there. I'm just, it, it just concerns me that we spend a lot of time talking about this, and sometimes, we've gotten to a lot of good places, we, we kind of, it gets off like this, so it's not real clear. But, and I agree with Councilmember Hamilton's comments, I think, let's go forward with this tonight, what you presented to us, what you wanted us to, to talk about, and endorse, and, and I think that would be a good thing to do, and if we want to have these other things come back, then we need to have them come back, because we're not giving, we can't give really good, detailed information or conversations if we keep kind of bouncing around and bringing up new things and not quite finishing other conversations. And it's because we all want to know about, it's all, it's all in good, but it's just, it, and this is a, this is probably the most complex thing that our subject matter we have in, in, in the, you know, for the job, in the council, or in the city, is to deal all this with, in the legislature and all these things. It is, like you said at the beginning, you've got a dozen groups you have to go work with and everything else, so. I would like to, I think what we would be good is to have it really say, okay, this is what we want to do tonight, this is what we're expecting, and then the council addresses that. And we could say, okay, we want to talk about something else, but not tonight, because you want us to talk about this and give feedback to you. I think it's really great, and again, I think we should move forward tonight with this, what you're asking for tonight, and then set up other conversations that, and a lot of these are things we've had conversations on before, and we're already, actually have had them in, looking for this session. We're just going back and redoing some conversations as well. But this is such a complex, you know, and so many different people you have to look, talk with in different groups and everything else, it's easy to get this, but I, we'd really like to see it a little more focused, a little less kind of revisiting things and starting, asking questions again that have been asked and answered before, and that kind of thing would help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for providing this comprehensive overview of our city federal agenda for '24 and '25. You guys do a great job. I just have one quick question, and that question is, can you share some of the key lessons or takeaways from last year? That, from the last year that we did these advocacy efforts, and that, that informed you and helped you to develop this updated federal agenda?
That's a, that's a good question, and I did not see coming. All right, I'll let Katie try to prepare a better answer. I would say, in terms of the, and this responds certainly to that question, a little bit to Councilmember Stokes's good remarks, part of the feedback that we got last year, we set this up structured around, we structured the entire federal agenda around the strategic target areas, and I thought at the time that that was novel. And as we brought in our federal consultants to plan for the year ahead, they said, well, that is novel, but what would be more helpful in an office is for the important stuff to be on the first, like, page or two. And so, instead of kind of the way we had structured it last time, congressional offices are really busy. They want to know, like, what are the things that really rise up for you? What are the things that for this year, and then maybe different from last year or the next year, what are the things that you want to elevate that could be asks, could be thank yous, could be updates, right? But what are the things of whatever nature that you want to elevate? And so that was a lot of what we did, was restructured it. And I think the second thing I would say that we learned a lot here is about partnerships. We have been very successful in forming some really robust partnerships. Katie has been a really key asset in building a lot of coalitions and partnerships. They take more work, because like, when we applied, for example, for this joint funding with the city of Redmond, that has taken a lot of collaboration, and some of our, even some of our technological tools, we've had to manipulate them in order to collaborate across jurisdictions, to submit literally the same paper. And that, but it's been worth it, because it is making us a better collaborative partner for our delegation. And that is both with the nonprofit associations, you know, the BDA and the Chamber, and then across other governments and in the private sector. We have brought the, all those different types of partnerships to different grant applications or congressionally-directed spending requests, and it is more work to build the coalition and figure out what role can you play in this grant application, or what can we do for you in your grant application? But it's been, I'd say it's yielded some really good rewards, and it's made us want to do more of that, we talked about that, and how we can bring that to our state work even more as well. And so those have been some of the lessons that we took away from the last year. Katie, you want to add to that?
Yes, I'd love to. I've come before you all for several years in a row, talking about the opportunities of the bipartisan infrastructure law. And while those lessons that can be applied to the bipartisan infrastructure law, I'm going to be talking to you about right now, they can easily be reflected in our work on congressionally-directed spending, or even issue advocacy. The first is, I love a project pipeline, or an issue pipeline. Knowing what the projects are that are in a somewhat priority order, depending on what the key opportunities are at the time, is really critical. I think of our project pipeline similar to the way I think of our federal agenda. We have a guiding, a north star, a compass for how we want to think about federal funding opportunities. So that's thing number one. Thing number two is internal coordination, and that includes all of you. Being able to hear directly from you about what you're hearing at NLC, being able to have that constant information from different resources internally, from different departments. And something that we continue to do to this day is that we meet every three weeks as a team to think about what federal funding opportunities we have in terms of grants. So that's thing number two, and that includes, even though I say internal, I really mean our partnership between you as the council and also us as staff as well. And then, thing number three is exactly what Jenice said, it's the partnerships, it's the relationship building. I think a really great example of that is the RACE grant that King County has put forward. There was one point in time when I thought, maybe we should put forward a RACE grant. It is an enormous amount of work to put forward a RACE grant. It takes an incredible amount of time and resources, and what we did is we established a conversation very early with King County Parks to find out if this is something that if we partnered together, they could take the lead on. What that meant is, is that we could provide resources to them, but didn't have to take on the bulk of that work. So that's just one other example of ways that we partner with external agencies or different groups. We have an incredible amount of support from our community-based organizations, from our private sector, from other agencies and elected officials, that was really, has really been critical over the last few years.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, so, I will make just my own comment on this. I, I think when I talk to housing providers, I hear time and time again how vital the low-income housing tax credits are. And so, what you got in there to, what is it, advocating for increased tax credits, or the increasing the allocation of the, of the light tech, I think is very consistent with what I'm hearing in the affordable housing community. So I'm grateful for you, keep hammering on that, and hopefully, something positive will happen. I'm just curious, is it better in your opinion that we kind of stick with what we have and really emphasize these few asks, or is it okay to add four more things to our federal legislative agenda? Does it water it down at all, or should we, is there a better time to do it? I know you want to be consistent with programs we're already working on, and maybe there's some preliminary conversation you want to have before you do an ask. So, you're the experts in this, you've heard that we'd like to include arts, police funding, childcare, economic development. I feel like the childcare is very consistent with all the other work that we're doing, but I, I wonder if all of it is consistent, or what your recommendation would be?
So my recommendation, and I'll let Katie just kick me under the table if she disagrees strongly. We do have childcare in here under that third main area of emphasis, resources for working families, so that's specifically calling out, and I'll make sure that if it's, oh yeah, it's, it's spelled out, I want to make sure it wasn't implied. I think we would be happy to make some revisions and improvements without radically changing the way that this is set up right now. I really appreciate your openness to take it up tonight, or to bring it back. I think we want you guys to all feel, it's really an important partnership that we have with you, we want you to feel like it, that you have buy-in in it, so we can bring back a slightly revised version to you for next week. We do want to usually get it adopted in Q2, after the president proposes their budget, before we usually go to meet with our congressional officials, so we'd love to keep it moving. But I think we can make some small improvements, given your feedback tonight, and bring it back hopefully for a quick action for you.
That would be great, and maybe you could work with the council members-
Yep.
-so that we're not doing wordsmithing on the dais when we-
Indeed.
-when we bring it back. Okay, great. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So, we won't take action tonight, we'll, we'll hear back from you next week.
Wonderful.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have two written reports that we're not going to go over here, they're in the packet, they're good. Although we did get feedback on the Vision Zero program, and, and City Manager, I actually gave you feedback as well, so do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. Yes, I know that the Vision Zero report is very important, and there's a lot of information contained in it. It also included actions for 2024, and I do think that it's something that as we look towards budget preparation for '25 and '26, we will be taking a look, a hard look at the proposals for that, knowing that this is a priority for council, for us to continue to work to advance the, the goal areas of Vision Zero. So, I appreciate it, and staff, of course, is available to any council members who have detailed questions about what's in the report.
Okay, that sounds good. All right, I believe we are done, so we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.